Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we proceed with our meeting this evening, we are going to take a moment of silence to consider our thoughts and prayers for the Lake Orion student who lost his life at the National Athletics Competition this past weekend. Thank you. At this time, Sandy, if you could please read our mission statement and take world call.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide quality education that powers students to be successful in the global community.
Board member Tonto, here. Board member Cunningham, here. Board member Aldani, here.
Okay.
Board member Mashawn, here. Board member Vasito, here. And Board member Fortunan, also here. And Board member Sutton, here. Please have a forum. Thank you. This time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. So move. Support. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Wongson?
Before I turn over Mr. Thiel, just one of the board should have a revised personnel report. There was an addition that came in at the end of last week. Sorry about sending this stuff up. Resignation due to relocation of staffers. I'll turn over to Mr. Thiel.
For resignations or retirements, we have Sherry Bressel, science teacher at Richmond Middle School retiring. Alyssa Hay, Richmond High School English teacher, she's resigning. New hires, we have Cambrian Privet, who is an assistant cook at Lee Elementary School. And Susan Falida, who is an afternoon childcare aide at Lee.
And there were no hurra brought to our attention regarding the people eight four unit minutes.
Any questions for the board? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we are having our presentation regarding our budget. Mr. Wongson?
So at the last board meeting, we shared several items with the board regarding our per pupil allocation, excuse me, our FTE that we had planned on by the students up, the governor's budget that was released, all some other known costs, contractual costs, assuming everything was kept as is in the budget. Tonight, we have some more pieces to the puzzle. Tammy Shad is going to talk to us about the other budget that's been released. Mr. Thiel, I think Mr. Trent is going to join us to talk about athletic uniforms and the open usually updated budget from last year to this year. The state is going to talk about band instruments and uniform. I'm going to bring back Tammy to talk about supply budgets that were implemented last year. And then I have the last item discussion before we begin more future board items is the national travel conversation here. So start with Mrs. Shad.
Okay. The hangup that just went around the table is an comparison of the governor's proposal that we reviewed last at the last meeting. We now have a senate proposal. The house proposal, we're expecting sometime later this week, so we should be able to report back to hopefully if yours first made more, excuse me, made more than you. So the difference between the two proposals and their side by side are major items. Foundation, the governor included a 2.5% increase, where the senate includes a three, just over 3% increase. So one is a $241 increase per pupil and one is a $302 increase per pupil. Then under some other major impacts, for Richmond in particular, the estimated foundation increase for Richmond is about $370,000 under the governor's compared to the senate's, which is $464,000. The governor included 23G, Michigan kids back on track, the senate did not. There's a Section 147A4, BIPs are offset in the governor's proposal, which is another $106,000, but nothing in the senate proposal. 31A, governor's proposal has about $16,000 increase, where the senate proposal is about $82,000. 104, benchmark assessments, as you can see in the governor's proposal, $12,649, the senate is just over $60,000. Bilingual, $4,000 under the governor's proposal and $23,400 for under the senate proposal for Richmond schools. Some things not in the governor's proposal but are included in the senate proposals, the 35D district libraries for $27,000. 67AP, which is the FASTFAU completion grant, we received $2,500 this year, the senate proposal is to add another $19,000 for next year. The 37, sorry, 35M literacy funding, also just the senate, just under $11,000 for Richmond. And then 61A, the BOGEAD has an increase of $12,000, almost $13,000 under the governor's proposal, but nothing listed under the senate. And then the senate include rural, I explained the districts really on, and perhaps that's the BOGEAD, $3,730. So not, we got one proposal, we get $688,000, the other proposal $692,000, it's just almost the same, it's just a matter of where it goes on the, in our categoricals and in our foundation.
And from a budgetary perspective, for this board to have the most latitude, you want your foundation, all of these sections usually come with specific requirements or it has to be spent out, et cetera, so it just ties your hands a little bit more.
And you might not get that. Right. Might not qualify.
This is the impact that they estimate for Richmond schools. So they're assuming-
Richmond would qualify at the at risk, and so it's $15,000 in one area, $82,000.
Correct.
But there are some sections that you have to apply for based on the criteria, they may or may not get that, when we've seen that for years. But this is the ones that if the senate were to go through, then this is the impact for Richmond.
And it's probably something that you want to begin to reflect. Is there any rationale to, you know, where it's provided in the governors, but it's not provided in the senate, is this strictly politics?
Politics, preference, someone's preference. I mean, the senate, I think, has a committee that meets and puts this together, your thoughts?
So it's politics. Okay.
Oftentimes, it's politics. As we saw with last year's budget, the last few pages of what certain people in their districts got.
Right.
It's politics. So I'm, one of the things I'm going to speak to about this district libraries, there's a bill going through that would require every district to have a librarian, it's in every building. It's good on paper, but $27,000 a dollar is not going to fund a statewide library in every building. And yet alone to find, I think libraries of the number of schools we have, they're not out there.
It would have to be a certified librarian, wouldn't it? So they're, it would be a looking. Teacher certification, right, or library science.
With the library science.
Their card to find.
Their, firing. Well, they're not, they're not existent.
No, because we didn't need them.
Well, because the funding and everything that went strong, people just, they're stuck being people in those positions.
So as Tammy said, we are expecting the house budget by the end of April, which will be on next Tuesday, I think it's April 30, hopefully by the end of the week. Part of that is a result of the recent election, which the Democrats remain in control of the house, so that will have a slam on what dollars are allocated to the programs. We do have, it's on the state website, but there's a spreadsheet for each governor and house, shows every district's impact for these categories.
Thank you. I think Preston and Jamie are up next.
Also just on the MASB site, it just came out today, or yesterday, it'll do a comparison for you of each item as far as what the senate did and what the governor did. It's a nice breakdown, it's really easy to read and understand, so if you're interested to dig into further into it.
Thank you.
So the next part is, we allocated, as last year, dollars to athletic uniforms and supplies, so I asked Preston and Jamie to come up and kind of explain what we've done, and we're assuming that allocation is there again for next year, what that would be, what the next phase is of that. If you recall, this was a five-year cycle that we were looking at to deal with the uniforms. The loss that was positive, we're only going by the numbers.
Okay. I guess I'll kind of take the lead on it, because this was like my baby. And first off, I want to thank you guys for this, this funding. What you'll see is, we've been able to do a lot with this money and take a lot of burdens, not just uniform-wise, but a lot of supplies and needs from different teams off of their plate. Coaches have brought stuff to me, I've said that's an essential need for your program, let's get it. Give me the receipt, give me the receipt, give me the items. So, starting with uniforms, when I stood up here, was it last spring, when we were talking about this, we set that, that rotation and looked at that five-year window. This first year was looking at what did teams need right away, what teams needed uniforms right now to get started, and then that kind of set our rotation. So we looked at the current supply of uniforms, some teams didn't have enough uniforms to fit their rosters. And we didn't want to have to cut kids because we didn't have a uniform for them if there was a roster spot we could get for them. We looked at the ages of some of the uniforms, some of them were extremely old. We go through, back through some of the yearbooks, they go, that's where that uniform came from. And then we, we looked at the sizes of the rosters again, and actually some programs that have added to, we had to expedite their uniform process. So, slide three, you'll see the uniforms that we purchased this year, and you'll see they're kind of, they're kind of all over the place. And what I've been doing is, as we buy something for a team, you'll see the inventory sheet we've got for them that gets added in their inventory sheet, and now that becomes an item that gets collected at the end of the year, to make sure that these aren't walking out the door and they have to buy new uniforms every year because kids just walk off. But some of them, where teams didn't have enough to outfit their team, some of them, they were extremely old. So for example, the middle school girls' basketball uniforms, super old. And so the numbers were starting to crinkle and come off, so I said, Rachel, let's get new uniforms for seventh to eighth grade, they were set. Some of the teams, it was, they needed shorts to get their, their number of full uniforms back up, so we got that. There were teams where they have personalized uniforms, and we bought unpersonalized ones, so that if a kid couldn't afford their own personal shirt that they keep, we have a shirt that they can use to compete. Again, once, girls' tennis, skirts, overalls and jackets, this year we added JV. So to start the year, we had to kind of go, okay, let's, let's figure out what we got, let's figure out what we can get to get started until these new uniforms come in, so we can outfit a full JV and a full varsity. Another set of uniforms that were super old, the middle school wrestling simlets, were high school simlets before I was at school, but a lot of the smalls had since fallen apart, gone away, so we got them, we got them caught up as well. Volleyball, the uniforms were actually, we found out at the beginning of the year, the uniforms, the way the NFHS changed the rules, the number could be up here, then it had to be down here, so we had to put an order in for them right away to get them into compliance. So what you'll see on the next slide is where we're at, who got replaced. What got replaced is in green, the teams that are due up next year, and this is in talking to coaches and what they need, and looking at what they have currently, those are in yellow, and then the subsequent years are in pink. Just looking at it roughly, I think we're ahead of the game in terms of getting these all replaced within five years. And there's a couple on, there's one on here as well, middle school track hasn't had uniforms, like actual uniforms, the kids, they buy a shirt that, they buy a shirt they get to keep, that's what they run in, and then they prepare shorts, they're set to get uniforms here soon. My goal is, if I'm, if I'm good on money going into the spring, then we'll get those uniforms ordered next year, but if not, probably not. But I think we've made that money go very, very far. The next two slides are looking at protecting that investment we've put in. I, if anybody knows, we have extremely type A, organized, things in boxes, things labeled, things in spreadsheets. So as we've been buying these uniforms, we've been adding to these inventory sheets for coaches, so they get an inventory sheet at the beginning of the year, and I know that probably printed out really poorly, but for example, basketball, you'll put the kid's name and the number for the uniform that they get for each of those garments, and at the end of the season, they check that off. Kids that don't turn their stuff in, we hump them and hump them and hump them, and then eventually, we have right at the top of the spreadsheet what the replacement value of each of those uniforms are. So if we've got a kid that doesn't want to turn their jersey in, well, they're going to get a bill from us. So knock on wood, we haven't had that issue yet. Next slide, they look chaotic, but you should have saw what they look like before. Those are three of our storage closets over in the locker rooms. And what I've done is, I've taken some of the fundraised athletic money that the departments collected through our couple of big fundraisers, and we've invested in shelving and totes, so that these uniforms don't get put on boxes, they get put on the floor, and then we got to pipe that drips or fitting that drips and they get ruined. We got totes, or they hang up, and they're neat, and they're organized, and they're in there, so that we know they're not going to get ruined from season to season.
Does each sport have their own room, or?
Yes. Yep. Each sport has a designated area for storage, so yeah, that's where their stuff is at.
Have you got those all cleaned out?
For the most part. We're working, there's, there's a couple of coaches that are still working.
Work in progress.
The, yeah, the, the big one was the one that basketball and soccer, it's a bigger one, so basketball and soccer kind of shared, that was a big undertaking, but I think we've got it in really good shape. So, the golf one, that's the one in the bottom left-hand corner there. What that looked like before was Coach Brockett just had all the bags stacked up, and he tried to get to something in the back, and you'd have to, to go through them all. Now they're all up and on a shelf and, and out of the way, so. And we're going to continue as we get more stuff, we're working with coaches, what, where can we put this stuff, what do we need storage wise? So moving on to supplies, again, like I said, looking at what do our teams need and what do our facilities need? So this is just a quick list, to be honest, I cut and pasted from my Excel document where I keep my budget, and I kind of pared some of these down a little bit. One of the big ones, and I know this was one of the big catalysts for this budget, was balls for teams. Moving forward, the idea is to buy, because basketballs are expensive, I've learned, very, very expensive. But what we're going to do is, if anybody's ever seen a middle school ball cart, it's kind of an amalgamation of a bunch of different kinds of balls, half of them have PE written on them. The idea is each year to add to that supply, get rid of the, the ones that aren't good, and get new ones that are in there, that are good for our kids. Same thing with soccer, tennis, baseball and softball, they have to buy new balls each season because they have to use new ones for games, so that's a reoccurring cost. Talking with Coach Risco with football, looking at each year phasing out some of our older shoulder pads. And again, that's a, that's a safety thing, because once they get old, they get heavier, they don't latch right, so phasing those out gradually. Oh, I should have brought it with me, but each coach got a med kit, it's about, about the size of a lunchbox. And we've, we've been filling those with tape and instant ice packs. Coach Brockett gladly takes all the bee sting cream that I can get from the other ones. But looking at, and this falls back on my time as a coach, what things do coaches need in a med kit? Yeah, 19 kinds of band-aids are great, but tape, pre-wrapped, instant ice packs, some big ones. And then looking forward, buying those in bulk, so buy a couple cases of the tape, a couple cases of ice packs every year. No coaches need it, they can come right to me and they can restock their bags. We've gotten headsets to replace some of the old ones for football, looking at cash boxes, tickets and display holders for our events, our awards, helmet reconditioning will be a yearly thing, covering the cost for our coaches to take their MHSAA required courses, because every new head coach is required to take cap one or two, so covering the cost of that for our coaches. And then looking at some things that our teams had paid for in the past that are essential to their program. The wrestling team used to cover the cost to recertify the scales, those are things they need in order to compete, so I, I have them send the bill to me. The software to run wrestling tournaments costs per event, we've, we've undertaken that cost, subscription fees for the online sites to log results, we've undertaken that as well. Practice lane fees for bowling, so, and you guys can go through, oh. Looking forward, the, when we got to this year, we had 82 good hurdles, and you need, they need a run me, so we've, we've started a plan to phase out a flight of hurdles or more every year, so that we can get rid of the old ones that are cracked or don't latch right, and doing that over time instead of one big purchase all at once. So, the final slide is kind of looking ahead, and I've talked a little bit about some of that. One of the things I really want to look into is, and you're talking to other A Ds, something I don't think we do, but I think we should start, is looking at adding dirt to the baseball fields every year. If you've ever been to districts or regionals in the summer, between games, a lot of that dirt floats away, because it gets really hot and dry, but those fields get low, so making sure each year we fill those back up to where we need to be. Same thing with the shot put sand and the long jump sand, those are things that just need to be touched up every year. Talking to some of the other A Ds, some schools cover their coaches association fees, something I'd like to look at doing in the future, because a lot of times, in order for your kids to earn academic or athletic all-state, your coach has to be a member of the association. So I think that's something as a department we should cover. An additional A D D for some of the off-campus teams, we have one that I use for carry around at events, but looking at getting one that we can use and house at tennis, and then in winter, take that over to the bowling alley, so that there's always one on site. And then the other stuff is some, some, you know, year-to-year stuff, helmet reconditioning.
That has to happen.
Yes. Yep. That's something we're required by the state to do, and it's not cheap. But again, looking at things that our teams need every year, there that we need for our facilities to keep them in the kind of shape that they should be in.
So right now, do you have any money left?
I've got a little bit, yeah.
You're going to spend it, right?
Oh, believe me, I'll spend it before that freeze comes up.
And that's, that was part of my question, of the amount that was put in.
Yes.
Obviously, it worked.
I do feel that that amount is, this, that list right there that is up there that you guys gave me.
That tax.
That covered, the money that was allocated covered all of that, and plus I have some. And some of what was purchased are one-time, aren't things that I think I'm going to need to purchase every year. We got new poles for the volleyball, that's at the middle school, because they were old and kind of janky. We won't have to replace those, hopefully forever. The, when we put the new shot put discus circles in, we bought rings and toe boards and we installed all of that, we won't need to replace those anytime soon. So there are some purchases on here that we won't need going forward.
So then, this looking ahead.
Yep. That's more of what I envisioned a year-to-year to look like, on top of what other things pop up throughout the year.
Can you feel like what we're given in the budget is enough, Preston, to do those things that you're looking ahead?
Yes. Yeah.
Yep. Now, this board will have to keep the bar up here, because as inflation increases, right?
Right.
30,000 last year, it's not the same 30,000 five years from now.
Well, and does it, one would make the difference too, as you're going through these uniforms.
Uniforms, yeah.
Right? It depends on the sport, and I would assume one's cost uniform might be more than another.
And the idea, the idea with, the idea with that is to pair those high-value sports with some of the sports where they don't cost as much, so that we don't have, we're not replacing all of the expensive stuff all at once.
So did we have teams that still did fundraising or still had?
They fundraised, but not, I told coaches if they had to purchase uniforms to let me know, and I would pay for those. And then, we've had teams that fundraised for other things, like warm-up shirts that they got to keep, or team shirts, or, or stuff like that, so.
We still have to fundraise for a lot of the stuff for baseball. We got jerseys, jerseys were handed down, so baseball stuff, baseball stuff, we still fundraise.
Right. Yep.
Baseball also does the, the extra uniform.
Right. Yep.
And this was pants, helmet.
Yeah.
The no-bags were handed down.
Yeah.
Mostly helmet and pants and shirts were handed down.
As a whole, there's left.
Yes.
Is it eliminated?
Yes.
No.
Will it ever be eliminated?
No, probably.
It's like, it's like school's life, you never stop here, you're going to target by grants.
But I think it's a huge start to what, what we need to run the sport, or that was what my thing was for four years.
Yeah.
So thank you for finally doing so.
I'm really impressed with the neatness and organization and everything.
You and I would have worked probably better.
I'm glad you did get to see some of those store cons.
Oh, no, I did. I did.
I do remember that.
Yeah, I bet you do remember this. Because we sure did.
About the smell.
We can throw money at, I don't think that's going to change.
When you deal with leaders, you're not going to forget that smell.
And again, this, this spreadsheet of who's, you know, who's due when, the idea was talking to those coaches, how old are the uniforms they have right now, what kind of shape are they in, and where can I get them replaced, so.
And then, once we hit, it looks like 2028 is the last year for them, then we just start the new my rotation.
So the idea is, people that got replaced this year, 2028 is when they're due, for 2029.
29.
Four years.
Yeah.
Basically, four years.
Yeah, 29.
Five years.
29 or 30, 2030, that's not a real year. That doesn't sound like it.
I think it's 2020.
Any other questions, Preston?
I do just have one quick question, so, just curious, like, the feedback that you've got then from the coaches in regards to this, like, were they, do you think was this satisfying to them, or not too much, or still want more, what was the?
My smile.
I don't get that, but like I-
No, I think, like, like we said, I think the- No, I, I think, like, like we said, I think the, the idea, and I, I just had this conversation with, I forget who, one of the coaches, but, you know. Small-town athletics, I think fundraising is, is part of that. Like, it's just part of that culture. They know they're gonna get their gold card for football, and they know they're gonna get their laundry detergent from wrestling. It's part of what they do, but my mindset was to take some of those ultra-necessary purchases off of them. And I had, I had a lot of coaches that were coming to me with stuff, hey, I gotta get this on my internal, and I said, no, give that to me. That's coming out of our supply budget. So they did really appreciate some of that stuff. Yep.
Yeah, I would think that they still would have to fundraise even if we did give, I mean, even for like, like tournament fees and stuff like that. Or is that something?
No, tournament fees, we, that's a separate line item, yeah.
That's right, I know that, I didn't know that.
But it, you know, fundraising for that, what I tell them is that stuff that's above and beyond what's, what's basic and what's needed. To really take your program from being able to operate well to the next level, so.
One last question.
Sure.
The golf course fees.
Yep.
When the, when the weather's bad and the golf team goes to that place.
Golf, that's golf. Yep.
Thank you. Who's paying for that?
They pay for that right now, but that's something that we're looking at covering in the future.
Oh, I thought, I thought that's where you go, I thought that's where golf goes when the weather is bad.
It's just a golfing range, it's not, it's not a course or anything, it's just.
I know that.
Yeah.
I know that, but my question is, we, we give space for our teams to come in and use the gyms. We just talked about that at the last meeting. So my question was just if, if it's the range going, doing whatever, why are the, why are the kids paying, or the coach paying for that in that house?
Yeah, and that's something I've been working with Coach Brockett, what that actually looks like and how often they go there. The idea would be to cover that in the future as well.
Connor, you're saying right now those are not mandatory?
No.
That's probably why.
Yeah, I think the average spring break, when they start in there, two to three times a week, if that. And if the weather wasn't good, the force wasn't up, then we'd go there.
But that's the difference between not mandatory and if you can't get on, that, that's the point I'm trying to make. That the, man, that's when you go, then yes, that's your thing, but if, if there is no spot that you can practice inside the school.
And we've, who've been working with?
It said there's no golf in the gym.
Right. All right, thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
You ready?
Thank you guys.
So last year, we put money into choir uniforms and band uniforms. Same concept as, as sports, doing a rotation cycle. It involves money for instruments, staples, the band teachers, then we're gonna share with you this.
All right, so we are in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year with the middle school, high school, choir and instruments. And you can see that we are also based on a five-year cycle. You can see that there is an allocation for uniforms as well as instruments. We've met, currently, we just met for our second time this year. So the first meeting that we had was back in the fall. We just had a basic budget meeting, like, what are we gonna put where? What do these items kind of look like? What is the greatest need? What are we kind of looking at? So that was a really productive meeting between myself, Ms. Shaq and Ms. Flor. And we kind of, kind of arranged which instruments has the highest need to go first, second, third, so on and so forth. What white uniforms are on the last limb and which ones can keep on going for just a little bit. So you can see that the allocation is fifteen thousand per year. Now, they do have flexibility within that budget. Let's just say we have an over cost of cleaning and repairs. Let's just say we have a lot of buttons that are popped off or, or something, or need a lot of hemming for the dresses. That can all be scooted over, so it just kind of weighs in their total allocation. But their middle school, high school, they're set to choir uniforms this year. Oh, let me show you what they selected. I have a sample that, that Ms. Maples let me borrow for this evening. But we had our second meeting and they were discussing what uniforms, you know, we're gonna go with and everything. So this is the design. Another really cool thing that we did, isn't this gorgeous? Sorry, I love it. That's actually great. And I love that it ties in the back. We are going to insert a slip, because you can see that it needs a little bit extra compared to the white. But these are all things that we were looking at when we met last week. You know, do we need to pay for the extra things in the slips and things and the girls for being comfortable? We're going with this one that ties simply in the back, which is a change from our normal choir and band uniforms. Because the end, because, you know, girls, we all have different shapes and sizes. So those alteration costs is going to be able to be supplanted into the new uniform costs. So that's a lot of alteration for each girl each year, each to mention and think about it, so.
And, and no zipper?
And no zipper, because what we noticed was that the girls had difficulty really breathing in with their diaphragm. So they definitely wanted a choir uniform that would breathe with better ease. So that's why also this one was chosen. It is different, but then it also matches the, the men's choir attire too, with the all solid black. So which is really sharp. And it's, you know, it's a little, a lot easier than to try to match the blue sections. If you wanted to check it out, I'll pass it around. This is the sample they're gonna go with. Another thing that we established this year was just a basic budgeting timeline. I know, Connor, what do you think?
Is that a good look?
Very professional, you know, we think of things like wrinkled guards, you know, the girls are sitting, because you know those ones, those wrinkly? By the time that they're off the bus, they're already wrinkled, you know? So we really wanted something that was good, you know, you could, you know, it's a lot easier, so. The other thing we established this year.
Right now, the middle school doesn't have that. They don't have the dress now.
No, this is the one that's going for purchase.
So we're gonna incorporate the middle school to have a dress now?
Middle school and high school choir uniforms.
Because they don't have that now.
No.
It's their regular clothes.
You're right, they don't, so this is really great. What also we determined was a purchasing timeline, which was really important because, you know, we did have a new music person join us. She was able to know right off the bat, boom, April is our choir and concert choir and, yes, concert band and concert choir uniforms are all scheduled to be ordered in April. This is important because when you get to marching band land, that needs to be ordered in late November, December because of how extensive those uniforms are. When you look at the budget, you'll see, why isn't it just a plain fifteen, you know, thousand dollar allocation? You can see that we were really strategic when we met in the fall, thinking about these bigger purchases such as marching band uniforms, which run about ten thousand over the allocation. So you can see in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, they omitted the new in order to shuffle, to make sure that we are totally right on to be able to afford the marching band uniforms in that year because they are still in relatively good shape.
So conceptually, that unspent money would go to roll up. The year that we need more. Either we're gonna build it into the budget or we will borrow from what's been in the savings and then it resets the volume. So it's kind of, as a net, it's, it's the same.
So they figure twenty-five thousand would be, yeah, in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-five thousand would be for the new.
Yes, and that's actually with, with the upcharge too, thinking about it being in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. Because those are so expensive. I mean, they are, they are very, very expensive.
They're almost a hundred dollars though.
Yes. And they are just gonna take a lot more time to order. So once again, if, if we ever have somebody new, they know the ordering timeline. So that someone new can say, oh, this is on my radar, I know I need to be on the lookout for, for what we're doing. You can see the second part, our instruments, how exciting. And I'm sitting here going, you know, I'm not a music person, but I'm sitting here in this meeting going percussion is a what? And string is, is which one? They're like, yeah, we can do, let's do wind instruments this year and string. I'm like, I trust you. Did you know that we were trying to, you know, find the allocation for like pianos and stuff? And when you look up, is piano considered a percussion or a string? Fun fact, it's considered both. So, interesting. So, so as I'm saying, as we're sitting here trying to figure out, okay, you know. So, and wind instruments you can see is on the docket for this year, string instruments, percussion over two years because of how big and how costly percussion instruments are. But then you can also see, and that's also thinking that piano falls as percussion. You can also see that we have here risers slash onstage piano. We're really trying to think of those big picture items and material placements that just as a program, we're gonna need to be replaced too. So we're also thinking ahead of, of those type of things.
Do you happen to know what string instruments they're referring to?
I do not.
String guitar, well, I think string.
The only strings we teach, I think.
But I, we, I think we do have, I thought we had violins and ukuleles and, we have those.
We had students, I believe it's ukulele, who, who already know an instrument. And they came back and, or they're in the beginning band.
Right.
And they learned the second instrument. It's because at the Christmas concert, they sat on the right left side and they were playing it. And these were kids, there's like, ten of them or maybe a dozen that took that beginning band class. The majority of them were learning a second instrument.
I was just curious about some of that.
No, and I'm, I'm not the best person to ask for, which category wind instruments are we gonna purchase? I'm like, I don't trust the music people. I will, I will run the order, I'll say that. So you can see how the way that we allocated the five-year budget for the choir and band uniform and the instrument budget. That is separate than the cars that were classed, of course, that is separate.
The repairs, is that a good amount? I found that was a good amount. I was just curious, I think, within their budget on that or?
So when we met in the fall, this was the number that we ished. And then now that we're in the first year of doing these orderings like this, now we can sit at the end of the table and say, okay, or at the end of the year and say, okay, was this enough? How do we need to fluctuate our dollars in order to make sure that the right category has the right amount? So whether we omit some of the cleaning and repairs, because if you think about it, new uniforms are gonna have less cleaning and, and things, those kind of costs are gonna go down, you know.
Right.
But these line items do not include the current repair, the current.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of wondering.
This is taking, we allocated seventy-five hundred dollars for instrument. This is taking all that seventy of my money, we're gonna spend seven thousand on new instrument and build in a portion of that cost to keep them up. This doesn't include what we already currently have.
Right, right.
In repairs, that you would remember when you were actually, that's not a line item.
Was there any way we can figure out what they may need to repair all of our current instruments that we have now?
Actually, Ms. Shaq has a vote into the facility to see what that's gonna look like. She's on, yeah, she's on, she knows that that's on the radar for purchasing, so.
I'm just curious, is the amount enough?
And what's great about.
The last two years, the repairs, and we've also this past year increased the supplies. So when they, like the car, the string, guitars and pipes, we, we gave them a description. And these are all the items you charge at this account.
And that's actually a company that we, that comes in and actually all tunes up and gives all these strings for guitars. So that would be like a purchase service that we would do for that.
Sounds out like a corporate music.
Yeah, that's actually, I think, who we go for.
But that's all the in-house, I mean, all the children have their own instruments that they're paying for and all.
Correct. They all have to set their own.
Right. So right now.
So what instruments, I mean, I'm trying to think of the band room in the middle school. Mostly all instruments the kids are going in and paying for.
But in all, it's a little different. Like, all of our percussion is mostly ours.
It's the district.
And most of the bigger instruments, like the Barry Saxons, all around, and those are from your fairytale district. There's really good prepared for.
And it just, and it just depends, like, things like saxoons and things, they, they have a higher charge because you have to take apart the instruments and, like, the instruments that you apparently, you know, you blow with, that. You, you have to take it all apart piece by piece in order to sanitize it and everything survives, but.
What kind of, I guess I'm just thinking broader. Are we supplying anything for the other students that have to bring their, their own equipment?
No.
Like reeds or things?
I mean, she has, Ms. Shaq has them, that the kids read breaks in the middle, she's got reeds in the classroom.
Otherwise, no.
But not consumables that are here.
The books are now paid for by the district. That's part of their supply that we increase. And just general things that could go wrong in middle class, small, but nothing. We, we are not covering the cost of, um, seventh, sixth grader going in the band and I want their new flute and I own one, I want to rent it, that's still a parent's responsibility.
And what grade, going back to the choir uniforms, what grade is that starting at?
It's, right now, it's high school and middle school is on the docket.
Seventh grade, eighth grade?
I believe there's a sixth grade choir and a seventh and eighth grade, like one, there's two choir classes.
So it's a sixth grade.
I believe it's the seventh and eighth grade, the sixth grade uses the polo shirt or, I can find it.
They do, they do the all-black polo, that would be considered your consumable uniform cost. Like, we're not gonna ask the student back for a polo that they've worn all year. That's consumable cost.
We had a conversation at the beginning of the year, especially with band students, they'd rather go with polo.
Yeah.
At the middle school, and to get them back, clean them for the, it, it would be cheaper justified.
Middle school girls, but high school students, those?
No, that's part, no, it's part of it.
Okay, because we still pay for, I mean, unless maybe we.
I remember the conversation.
So maybe this coming March event, I may not be paid for charge, so. I don't need any this year, so.
The point of this one is, is the allocation we gave, we started buying the instruments, buying the uniforms. So at this point, we have a plan to keep the allocation the same unless there's, nobody said they do. If I ask anybody, do you want more line items?
But the thing with this, this is huge.
Yeah.
Some of us do this because we haven't.
Something we have talked about for.
Absolutely.
Years, getting to the point of doing, it's huge.
And I'm excited, like, the concert band uniforms are for middle school and high school, I'm sure you're saying? So will, will they be getting little hoops and such for the middle school?
Not for the, the boys still, we still are doing the polo shirt and the pants for the middle school boys. That is preferably what they like to wear on stage. But that was a conversation that we had earlier in the year with Ms. Shaq and Ms. Flor that said, yes, let's stick with that. That was a team decision.
I think this is huge too. The last choir uniforms I fundraised for, for like three years before we were able to even afford them. So I think this is probably very much appreciated.
Same thing with the band uniforms, the last stuff got fundraised. So I, I appreciate too that we have seen this and have added this piece. Thank you.
Okay, and the last, second to last item is talking about supply budgets. In the last, this past budget, we went through and allocated grade levels slash department supplies. We instituted this year a new ordering system for staff. We've been monitoring that. Cam and I have been looking at those numbers probably at least quarterly. We've had conversations with the principals and some staff, trying to get to, is this a need or want type of thing? Our philosophy's been if it's needed for the course to teach the curriculum, that's what we've been trying to make sure is installed. The idea is pens, paper, crayons, ruler, basic supplies for school, we should be asking parents for. Have we a hundred percent eliminated that? No. I've worked with the principals about changing the tones of walking back letters and so forth. And it will be in our June newsletter, supply list that the district is supporting. But if you want to support as a parent, I guess we're not gonna stop those parents going to Target at the end of July when all the max school stuff comes out and doing that network. So, and I'll turn it over to you for talking about the supply budgets.
Okay, so what I did put together for you is just a list of all the supply budgets by building your department that we've been talking about tonight. So the first page is the elementary school supplies. You can see that there's a general supply account, which covers paper, like the big bulk quarter of, of papier paper that they use. Then there's kindergarten, first, second, third. And then for the, special, there's art music, thank yous, art music, P E, STEM, or STEAM and technology. So in total, the elementary school has twenty-eight thousand dollars for supplies to date. In all the categories, they've spent about nineteen thousand and they have about eighty-eight hundred left. Now, we'll be, we'll be adding to these budget lines with the principals, we met with them just a week ago or two weeks ago to outline a plan. We met with them just a week ago or two weeks ago to outline a plan on how we're looking at next year's budget, so then a week from today, we'll meet with them again and go over the specifics of, you know, what are you, what do you want for kindergarten? What should we budget for kindergarten? Doing like a zero-based budget and, you know, putting in what they need for kindergarten, what they need for first grade or for the specials. So that when we're done, we have hopefully a nice budget that they can live with. Because this was kind of our test year, we put money in, we weren't sure where we were going to go, but this is where we're sitting right now.
So this is a thousand for each?
No, it's a total for the grade level.
Right, a thousand for the kindergarten.
That's like five classes.
That's perfect.
Does this cover like hand wipes, tissues?
It's sometimes, it just depends what the teacher's prioritizing, and I believe sometimes they still have parents who drop off tissues or drop off the hand wipes. So most of it is crayons.
They can order tissues from school supplies if they need it. It's whether they choose.
Well, I mean, we are, because there's all this, there may be balance, but yet you're still getting text messages.
Yeah, yeah.
But most, like most folks spend, it is only from a couple.
And we still have bills coming in to pay. We're letting them order through next week, and we still have some bills to get paid. So there'll be more coming in, but this is what we have on the book as of today.
Okay, so, so you're saying that it's one thousand for now all, for four or five sections we have?
Five, almost five.
Okay, all five, okay.
And that'll be part of our conversation next week with the principals. You know, is that sufficient? Are you splitting it out evenly by teacher? How are, how do we want to do this going forward?
That used to be four hundred. That used to be four hundred dollars.
Right, yeah, that was quite a way.
And I think we're just thinking about pens and pencils and markers and stuff like that, but if I'm a teacher and I all of a sudden want to do an exciting, like, creating a book, like Mrs. Barrett now is creating books and all the students are going to do that, I might be used, I can use this budget for that, right?
You could, but that's why we have the big budget at the time.
Isn't that part of the curriculum?
That's part of the curriculum.
Not necessarily.
Well, if it's like, if she's just like doing it like on her own, it's like, like a class project, sometimes they'll build a musical instrument.
Mother's Day play.
Or mother's days, yes. So they could use this budget for that type of stuff as well?
They could, it just, again, one part of our discussion will be, how are we going to use this money? What are we planning to cover as basic classroom supplies? And then what else is there to get involved with? Does it want, needs?
The intent, the intent of this is to cover basic supplies that we need to run the club.
Okay.
So I'm the bad guy. Electric pencil sharpener, not basic supplies. We replace, that's insurance.
Oh, you can buy the classroom then.
You can also buy, but, but there's only so many outlets in this class.
Right, yes.
If I gave everybody electric pencil sharpener, you do the plugins for the laptops, you do the computers, you do the board, we don't have enough outlets. We've got to start thinking of that stuff. So it is basic supplies for the club. Paper, I don't want them, high school math, they do printing graph paper out, just buy graph. But that's what was happening, is they were printing, so now that's what that supply is.
Well, and this is, this began, this is the first year that we've done this. So everybody has to understand that, sitting here at the table, that there's a lot of having to understand how to do it just a little bit different because we, we've always done it like this, we've always sent out the list and asked for thirty-seven things from the parents, you know? And so it's, it's not going to, it's not going to be fixed in a year. It's just not, but I think the more conversation, the more they see. And if you want some kind of different tissue, that's, that's on you.
Well, my thing is, is really just, it's just the standard of running a business to supply hand wipes to clean the desks or to supply tissues and toilet paper. Why would they even have to tap into this? Why wouldn't they have that already to them?
Because as a superintendent, I cannot give out of school fund, kids and sanitizer to clean desks. That is a custodial job. Now, am I, am I naive that it's not happening? No. But if the regulation people came in and saw that, we would have a problem. Because we've got a chemical, we have a chemical sheet on file of what chemicals we're using. And if it has a reaction, we don't support that. The custodians are supposed to part and wipe the desk. If they don't, that's the process we put in that you need to let us know, because that part of it, which we do. But I can't endorse spending district dollars and having kids wipe desks.
Well, what if it's the teacher that brings it up? Because I, I went down after end of the day.
Right, but yeah, that's what, if that's what the teacher wants to do, the teacher operates, that's what we're district, that's what we're doing.
Spray.
Well, because kids are, well, put food all over, I mean.
But they have, they usually, like, I think there is, like, for each classroom, there's like a spray bottle that is like from the custodial stuffy that you can use to wipe down. It's not Clorox, but it's a different cleaning product, I think, that is provided by the district? No.
I'm not aware.
He just said, sure. And I was just, no, that's not, that's not.
I mean, not for students, like students.
Because he just said, no.
Yeah, I would, I'm not aware, but it's possible.
Well, because I know there has. And then talk about getting rid of Clorox wipes, you know, some districts don't even use Clorox wipes. They are grabbing on that now, and they want to use a certain kind of spray that they're creating because Clorox wipes, I don't know if it's the, whatever.
It's the other chemicals.
The other chemicals in there, they're worried about students at a young age being exposed to them too much, so.
So would that kind of stuff come off of the building budget then? Each building has a budget for tissues and things like that?
Yes.
Toilet paper, we buy through the custodial. Paper towel, we buy through the custodial. We will never, in my lifetime, run out of toilet paper or paper towel.
What about tissues?
Kleenex tissue?
Yes.
It's on the list of from school specialty that if you don't have tissue, then the teacher, I go inside and eat two boxes of Kleenex.
But here's the thing, if you don't like what the school provides, then teacher, get your own kind that you like. We provide Kleenex and toilet paper. So you're saying that we do, so we do have Kleenex already.
Why would you give them, why would you touch the supply budget?
Because every teacher asks for more Kleenex.
They do.
Boxes and boxes of Kleenex.
Okay, well, then they fill up their supply and ask for more Kleenex. We supply Kleenex and toilet paper for God's sake.
I'm not sure why you're getting, you're getting.
I'm getting, the way I'm getting, because I can't believe that we're talking about.
Because you know, we have kids, and so maybe you don't get the text messages every public once.
And it has a lot of.
Because maybe you're not giving the messages.
It has to do with the fact, of course, you're talking like we don't provide toilet paper and Kleenex.
I'm asking clarity on it.
And we, he gave you clarity about eight minutes ago in the conversation.
And the clarity is that they don't provide tissues.
No, it's not, that wasn't what the clarity was, was not.
The toilet paper, paper towel are taken out of the custodial budget because they're the ones that order it, they have a question. The tissue is on the supply list for teachers on school specialty. If they need tissues for the classroom, make an order. Some still send out into us. And that's what we're working with the principals. And I don't know how they're doing each of the building, but the supply list or the requests going out is going to clearly say next year, this is what we're providing in the district. If you want to give extra pencils or give crayons, or you see a sale on a donut, you can do that, but you don't need to buy crayon or pencils for good night, I get it, going back with basics. It'll be over.
As a teacher is asking you, you said you're getting text messages from the teacher asking for tissues, then you respond back, get it from the school. It's as easy as that.
Well, it is out there. I mean, I can, I know I've seen what Candice said.
I'm not saying that it's not.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, we provide, so just respond back to the teacher, get it from the school.
Well, like Ryan has stated, this is going to take some time. This is our first year through this, and that's why we get. So Tammy, if you could please continue. Okay, thank you. So that's the elementary. Then we flip to the second page, and we have middle school. Again, they have a large supply number at the top for, most of that really does go to papier paper. Then they have, we have price subject, and middle school's both, they have fourth and fifth grade, and then they have the department subject. So they have Spanish, technology, music for grades four and five, STEAM, fourth grade, fifth grade, mathematics, R E L A, P E, science, social studies, and then we have band choir uniforms, and then supplies for the band for in sixth to eighth, and choir for in sixth and eighth. So you can see in total, it's forty-five thousand to fifty-one for the middle school, and they have about, not quite half left. But again, we have more orders to pay for, and they're coming in through the end of next week, they can order, and then it'll take another few weeks to get allocated. But it's pretty much a thousand dollars, and then some are, some areas that have more items, it's about twenty-five. Any questions on this?
So obviously, Tammy, I'm, I'm, accounts that are over, I'm assuming that's going to be a conversation with the, the dam and the administration about, okay, why are we over? And maybe we don't, in other areas, maybe we don't need so much, is that, that conversation?
Yes, and the other thing is, is I look at, when the auditors come in, they don't look at each budget line. I mean, they care, but they don't, that isn't what we're watching on necessarily, whether each budget line is over. It's by function. So under one twelve, it's all middle school. As long as there's room in this middle school, but it has the little overs and unders, and hopefully, we don't allow them to go over in total of their building, but we will allow them to have some fluctuations in line by line, because it's hard to remember every little detail. When something comes up you weren't planning, so you're over here, but maybe something didn't cross its mind, you're there, so you have under. And generally speaking, they stay under. We don't really ever have an issue. Hopefully, you can go back and look at audits, if we got one or two lines in the audit that are over, okay, so.
There's your supply counts, twenty-five hundred for band, middle school band, middle school choir. That started, in ten years, it's gone from twelve hundred to twenty-five hundred.
And then you asked about repairs, so while I was over there, I logged into the system, and the middle school repairs had about fifteen hundred, and they've spent just a small amount of that, but they do put that out more since the end of the year, so they have about thirteen hundred left.
For repairs, yeah.
Right, right. And as Renee pointed out, when we met with them last week, they do have a list of things that they want to get done, and we will be talking more with them about do they have an option. So then the next page is high school. Again, same types of categories, high schools, all departments, not, you know, grade levels, because they'll have self-contained grade levels. In total, their budget is fifty thousand two hundred. They spent not quite half, so they're about at half. Again, we let them place orders. But being part of that, you know, it's seventy-five hundred dollars practically for the band and uniforms, so we'll be tapping into that as well and place the order in our next week.
Are we teaching photography? There's nothing spent there or any art supplies, I'm just curious.
We had photography a couple of years when we bought some cameras. So they're probably nearing their life expectancy, so they'll either come out of this year or next year's.
This year is what it is.
So this year?
Next year is the curriculum review.
Got it, okay, thank you.
And if you remember, we took off in the course catalog, there used to be a twenty-five dollar fee for arts, and we got rid of all those, and so any of those costs would come out of here, so.
So it seems to be a lot of money left over at the end of the year for the middle school and high school. I'm just curious, are they, are they, like, once this is made, like, are they allowed to come to, like, their principal or whatever and ask to use this money for, this is strictly for supplies though, is that what you're saying? Okay.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
So we typically, as an organization.
Thinking like, could they come and ask for field trip money for something out of this, or no? There's like so much money left over.
Well, if we go field trips, it'll probably be a purchase service, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, that's why, okay.
It's not impossible. We know we're going to have unspent.
Yeah.
So typically, as an organization, April thirtieth, we do what's called a budget freeze. Well, I don't want to officially announce it, but it's announced, it basically says, from this point forward, the last month of school, we only purchase what we need to get through the end of the year, and everything's looked at. Part of that is because we got to close books and predict, maybe do a budget in June, but also if we can't have things coming in next year and it didn't get charged, this year goes into next year. So that doesn't cover grants, anything with grants you continue to spend, because we told the, whoever was doing the grant, the federal government or state, what we're spending it on. Graduation is an expense that we get at the end of the year that will come through.
And if they decide they, you know, running short of copy paper, recently done orders that are not paid for, we've done orders for copy paper for middle school and middle school. So hopefully that will, you know, we're talking with them, the idea is to get what they need to get at the end of the year.
And I know this is kind of our first year doing that, but like, is this, do you think normal to have this much left over at this time of the year?
Yeah.
Okay.
And whatever is left over, we'll roll into next year's budget still, we'll still stay there.
It rolls up into the fund balance, but these starting budgets, unless we do something different, they will start in the budget projection.
Okay, they'll just start, they're just starting a thousand or five.
Like, for instance, the third grade at the elementary school, and I was, Mrs. Mangudi, Tammy and I had a conversation, why is third grade so high? Well, they have some unique things in their curriculum, which costs. So next year, it may be that that grade level might be a larger number because they have more consumable. It's the same thing when you get to high school science. There's a lot of experiments that are consumable, so that's, you know, or a year that the ELA, outside of adoption, might need a new set of novels because they're just beyond use again, so.
You know, like graduation, there's a whole bunch of stuff that'll happen during the month.
I was just going to point that out. Graduation is on here, and then the band uniforms, choir uniforms, so those two are large dollar amounts. That's more than half of what's left, and most of that is going to be spent, if not all, by the end of the year.
I think the other piece, Brian, I don't, I don't know if your administrators are doing that, this, but I would always have a conversation with my staff during April and maybe before to say, hey, there is money left in here, please look at what you have. Does anything need replacing? Test tubes, you know, whatever in your department, so.
And that's what, that's what we're doing now for line items, and that was the principals last Monday, they have until the twenty-ninth, to say, okay, if I've got a thousand dollars, what are you spending grade, whatever, five or English? What are you spending that up to? And maybe you need twelve hundred. So we're starting to look at, okay, how many bills will we do more, so we can see what the bottom line is. Because in theory, the numbers we've raised in the grade level or department budgets, previously, we're taking out of the general building supply. We didn't reduce that general building supply, we just raised the grade level. So in theory, that number should come down. And high school has, because if, we used to allocate, one day it was fifteen thousand, that's the general supply for the building, well, they only budgeted at eight thousand. So we shifted the money to be more in the classroom level.
For the band uniforms and instrument repairs, they have a budget of three thousand. Then the next page covers the athletics, and Mr. Preston went through all the things he's been spending. To date, out of the sixty-four thousand we've created for uniforms and supplies and small equipment items, the amended budget is at sixty-four thousand, they've spent over twenty-one. Now, some, again, have just approved, some payment-free uniforms that are going to be sizable that will come out of this tournament. They, those checks didn't happen, but those will be going through, so that number will[1680.83] Those checks did need to be, those will be going through, so that number will go down.
Is there a chance, Brian, that we can get, when it comes to the final, the same report showing? Is that an issue?
No, we'll pull that out.
You know, maybe sometime in June or something. I would just like to come here and see where we're at.
Well, June will be the final, but we can get to June and see where we're at.
Okay, sounds good.
Or at least the first meeting in June, so as of now, knowing we're still going to have bills coming through.
This is where we're at. Okay, thank you.
And then the last page, we talked, also talked about the state events. So we have four budgets for state events. One's at the middle school level, the 1,300. They don't do a lot of state events, but they've done coral. And they've done, they had a Michigan music competition, I think, this year. We had a student that went to Detroit and was selected to participate. High school, we have 10,000. High school has, covered We the People, mock trial, their solo and ensemble when they make the states and as well as coral. And then we have scheduled B, purchased events. We don't have a budget in there, but that's where that 34,000 would go, that we approved for robotics.
So it's the June budget, that way you'll see that one.
I was going to ask, that didn't come out of the, oh, no, because that's the state events.
We didn't do that at the amendment time because we weren't aware they were going to. And that did the June final. And then we have, the last line is the athletic department, state meets. We've budgeted 7,500. This year, we spent cross-country and powerlifting. So we still have 7,100 to spend. In the past, we've also had wrestling, softball, cheer, bowling track.
That just depends on.
For competing at that.
Just depends on the season.
Right.
So for the other scheduled Bs, where would they, is this where they would go also?
Yes.
Or if they had anything?
Yes, we, that's, you know, depends if it's academic or like backup.
Are you asking supplies for the other schedule B?
Yeah.
The other schedule B, if you do SAB, there is no line item for schedule B supplies. That's all their own internal student activity. Or NJHS or NHS. There's no supplies for any schedule B positions.
No.
Other than robotics, which we have to have a match for, for the state. But I'm thinking like the Green Club. We didn't allocate money upfront to them for supplies.
Right, right. If the teacher, if they signed up to do it and they needed certain things for their little curriculum run it, they was paid out of their own pocket or?
I would say there's been, the supply fund is in the schools and probably been huge. But it's typically that they do some type of fundraising that they've done. Most of them, unless it's a brand new one, like the chess club that's being run down by at the middle school. We got, they got people donating chess boards and so forth. I had told Mr. Knight if he needed, I was going to throw away just a bind to have started, but they didn't need it, so if it's a new one, we might have to use some other general supply. But typically, there's a dollar value for the previous year that they just carried over.
But like our state events, say like the Science Olympiad and things like that, should there be like some kind of a budget there for the schedule B when they do make it to state?
That they would get charged under the first two line items, middle school and high school.
Oh, okay.
Any state event goes into that. So yes, if the Science Olympiad goes, we would charge it. Deca would go and make sure that dollar bill would get charged to the CTE cost. But yeah, if they went to states, or if they went to national, like they did in the middle, that would come out of there, yes.
Okay, perfect.
It's just a generic state account for high school. And it's there because we don't know where they're going to make it each year.
Right, and we don't know who's going to make it.
But so that's covered what supplies is now for its schedule Bs.
Yes, generally your travel costs, that's what, food, they're going to need hotels everywhere.
Right.
And again, I'm not looking for an answer today, but I, the next question is, do you want a separate line item for nationals? Or would you just want us to charge it if we have that situation? Like under the schedule B, the third, but that's where robotics is going to be.
See, Tammy just put it there.
We would just amend the budget in June with dollar value. Because in June, essentially, all these unspent are going to go down. And you're going to have to be putting money in this account and then the rest goes into the whole one.
Well, I think the conversation that we had the last time, and I think just putting it there when it happens, the conversation of what is it we're doing? And if it, if it moves, if the high school robotics moves the way you want, that's going to be a whole different ballgame, right? With curriculum stuff and that. But to Angela's question, the fundraising and that, I think that comes in to, we might not be able to fund 30,000 dollars. Because the reality is, we have no idea what our budget, you know, what's happened. So wasn't that kind of what our conversation?
Yeah, it was like, do we make a line item? And as long as, like, pretty much, I just wanted to make sure that other schedule Bs were having that option as well. And you're saying, yeah, they would just do that, or high school, that's what that functioned.
Anybody who makes it to state, we'll go.
And we'll do our best if we can afford it.
And anything that was over and above, then that's when we have to have the conversation of, can we?
Can we afford it?
Can we afford to, we help some, they have to.
To do, right.
You know, like the, when they went to California that year, the money that was in the line item was this. But the reality is, it took a little bit more.
So technically, I think all I'm trying to understand is that in our line item, it's this here 10,000. Like that we're allotting for the high school for all state or higher levels.
But not schedule Bs.
But schedule Bs would go in there too, correct?
The schedule B athletics falls in that bottom line. Whereas if Haiti in the left column, that's the athletic with state. Middle school athletics do not go to states.
Okay, right. So the other high school schedule Bs, like you say, like I said, like Science Olympiad or something, that would come out of this.
Yes, yes.
We're just doing this here because it's such a large number, correct? Robotics one, you made this one.
No, because it's a schedule B.
Well, you just said schedule B comes out of high school.
No, it's going in there because we didn't have money.
We didn't have.
We only had 10,000 to pay for that. So it goes in there and you amend the budget because you spent that amount of money.
So when you give the new budget production.
So you just made this little extra one here because that's what we're going to put our 34.
That's where we put the robotics last year.
Okay.
So when you guys approved the budget, we knew that wasn't an ongoing expense, so we took it out.
Right, okay.
And now they've come back and ask, so that would be the question. If you want to keep a number in there, then when Tammy amends the budget in June, it's going to say 34,000. You want to put 15. So when I reduce it, we're going to reduce it down to 15. So there's always a long number there. So you know at least you have. But that could be anybody going, it could be Deca going to Florida or California where they wanted that.
I would be willing to add a schedule B.
If it's a schedule B club.
That's what I'm thinking.
And it's going to.
But it's.
National, that's where it's charged. But there are some academic clubs, like choir or band that are going out of here, not the schedule Bs.
The people would see considered academic, like, or that's why, oh my gosh.
I just, I just think, I think the conversation, just whoever is, and just robotics because that's our. Whoever's responsible for that team, that talking about their point of fundraising. Because wasn't it that their fundraising had mostly to do with their.
Sponsorships.
That, yeah, that had to do with being able to attend events or robots.
Right, right. Remake the robots themselves are very expensive, yes.
So do we want to put a robot in there? I'm sorry, we kind of went around and around on that, or just leave it like this?
Well, what else then would it?
I know, that's what I was trying to think, what else would it?
Is there another schedule B that would fall in there?
Yeah, like what else would it?
No, because the year the art students went to New York, it came out of the high school academic itself.
So that's the only club that would really fall in that line?
No, you know, we, the people, no, because that's academic.
That came out of the high school.
Came out of the high school one.
Because it's academic.
Why? For the high school.
We had, wait, we had, no, it was extra.
Well, we had to do extra that time, but I think we still put it.
I'll look at it, I'll verify.
Yeah, we need to figure that out. Just every, anything that goes over our.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to get, get stuff in there.
Yeah.
I was like, so far, the only thing that has come out of the schedule B one is robots.
Okay.
The We the People, mock trial, all has come out of the high school academic. That's what I thought.
And the Deca.
If we had Deca that way.
But we spent, I, I may have not yet, yes. But we spent, we voted extra money to send We the People.
Correct.
And when we sent those kids to California, that was extra money, the airfare to go out to California.
So that line item would have been increased.
Yes, that's what, right.
And then we dropped it back down once we did the budget.
Correct.
So we just increased the academic high school line.
Correct.
That's right.
So if we.
But as the situation has.
As the situation happens.
Right. But if we made this an actual line item and budgeted money for it, then that's where it would have fallen. Like technically, that's where then the We the People were, would have fallen.
Under which one statement?
Under this new, um, schedule B one.
Or the zero.
Yeah.
It's that new, it's been there, but it's just zero, there's no money.
It's just zero right now.
How many, we don't have 34,000 because that's what you approved.
All right. Okay, any other questions for Tammy? Well, I don't know if we gave, I don't know if we gave this wrong, say, any direction as to whether or not we want to add some money in there as a line item or not.
I, I'm not looking for tonight, but I need that answer. Because at the next board meeting, we will be establishing, we'll hopefully have the house budget.
Okay.
After you have the house, we need to make some decisions in terms of, okay, where do we think we're going to fall? Do I want to go in the middle, do I want to go with the higher, the lower? So that we can begin building the budget. May 1st is our deadline for retirements. We have a, the staples, you remember when the next meeting is, we're scheduling, it's like May 5th or something.
I think it's the 6th, I know it's after May 3rd.
So we have the next scheduling meeting where we will start finalizing schedules based on student own. So I'll know staffing.
May.
Pardon?
May.
May. So by the next board meeting, those are, we'll have some, like, if I know we're going to go with the house budget for 31A, then we know what brand, what people are going to be charged towards 31A. If I know we're going to have this much money in 31AA, we know what people we're going to charge, which would then the rest would get, I know it's all general fund, but the rest get charged to the discretionary. So at this point, I'm not looking for any move forward until we get some.
So that's something to discuss.
Some last pieces of information. So at the end of next meeting, and then on the 28th is where we got to make the final decision. It is possible, we're not going to have a budget by the 28th, even the first meeting in June, of what they're going to actually approve. So we just got to pick one, the best guess, build it, and then amend it in the law. So I'm going to look at bringing it up sometimes, just want to give you the stuff, give you the sense of what we have. Thank you, Tammy.
Thanks, Tammy.
Could you have more buckets to add or?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, good, thank you. All of you who have put all that information together, you've really all done. Okay, next item on our agenda is our Blue Devil, um, Blue Devil raids. Candace will start with you. Sandy?
I'm all set, thank you.
Kelly?
I'm good, everything.
Okay, Angela?
I am all set, thank you.
Danielle?
Good.
Margaret?
I just want to give a raid to Ms. Leroy. I went to the salmon release.
We didn't go Saturday.
We didn't go Sunday, I think it was. It's just so cool at Metro Beach. And all that she does, for the open house that she does beforehand and gets those kids and in there with their families. And then they go to the nature center and get a little lesson. And she just does a great job, so shout out to her. It was very fun. And then the sun was shining this year. Legendary porch.
My husband was asking where they let it go.
I don't know. Yeah, yeah. And it was pouring down rain last year. This year, the sun was shining, so it was a good day.
I don't have anything, so we'll move on. Um, next item is our student board of education, Professor Connor.
Starting off with the middle school, the RMS held their annual NJHS induction ceremony last week. They honored all of our current members as well as all the new in-ducts. So congratulations to everyone who conducted. In the high school, last week, we celebrated the Macomb County All Academic and BWAC All Academic students. I was able to participate in the BWAC All Academic banquet with Mr. Walmsley and Mestabo, so thank you for that. We are finishing up makeup state assessments and grade 11 students are taking the M-Step this week. And the student government is hosting their second blood drive of the year on May 1st. It will be from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The auditorium lobby, due schedule appointment, you have to go to redcrossblood.org. And then on May 30th, RHS is hosting our third annual sports physical night. If you have a student athlete who needs a physical dated past April 15th, this is a great opportunity. It'll be hosted from 5:00 to 7:00 PM on May 30th for $15 per physical. And then in athletics, all of our spring sports teams are doing great to start the seasons. Richmond baseball is starting off their season strong, being 6-1 with sweeps over Elmont, Emily City. And after the tough loss tonight to Elginak, they will host the second game on Wednesday at Richmond. Softball is also moving well, being 7-1. They will play Elginak in a doubleheader tomorrow, as well as Alaso on Sunday. Varstee Golf has had three BWAC matches so far, taking third out of seven in all three of their meets. They will host next Monday at Richmond Forest. Varstee Track has a couple of meets coming up this week, as they will travel to Elginak tomorrow and host a BWAC imitation on Friday. Varstee Tennis has had a clean sweep against Yale last week, winning all eight matches, as well as a 5-3 win over Emily City. And lastly, girls soccer is doing great as well, starting their season 4-1-1 with a win against Emily City last week, 8-0. And they win over Arbeida 5-0 tonight. Congratulations to all of our sports teams.
How many days left of school for you?
30. Yeah, 30 actually, I think it's 16 school days. 30, yeah, 30 days is a lot of work.
Thank you, Connor.
But it is counting, right?
Okay, next item on our agenda is our superintendent and legislative update, Mr. Walmsley.
There are no public comments from the last board meeting. For the start of the bond project, the shotgun just hit that we approved, has been moved and relocated and actually using it. It actually is very nice when you look at the space they have and where they're going. Our next is, we're going to move those, some of the soccer nets over there back to where they were to give them more room on that field there. Last Wednesday was the Mid Richmond Middle School NJHS. I thank Mrs. Wall for what she did, putting it together. And I got a report on it, Rashawn was there to present the Power One Award. I was unable to attend because I had a BWAC superintendent's meeting. Last Thursday, Board Member Cunningham and I attended the MISD budget hearing. Each one of you, in front of you, should have gotten a copy of the MISD budget. And we have it on the docket to present, talk about it at the next meeting for approval of either approving the resolution, approving the resolution with comment or denying it, according to the estimate of the May 28 meeting. If you haven't been in front of the middle school, there's a new lending, free lending library box up there. On Saturday, Mrs. Buchanan, along with the Quandals in Metro Detroit, installed at a ribbon cutting ceremony of a lending library. It's located kind of the walkway to the old main entrance, right there on the side, where Mrs. Wall, the organization, the books are, you know, furnished, et cetera. But it's, have a book, drop one off, you need a book, take one. They also worked that day cleaning up the ground this party, their group day celebration. Tomorrow night is the Combs County School Association Annual Educational Dinner meeting, where many do our combs at. And they will recognize Mrs. Cunningham for multiple classes she's taken. This weekend is the Little Women Musical, under the direction of Brian Braun and high school teacher Kate Vincent. It's Friday and Saturday at 7 o'clock and Sunday at 2 o'clock. Make it, should be good performance, the little bits that I've seen from the audition or the practices, they really, they really look good. Still time on Saturday, if you want to come to the Night at the Racist. I got extra flyers here for one. It's a great cause for the Richmond Education Foundation, which provides scholarships for seniors, summer camp scholarships, and classroom breaks. On June 11th, at 7 o'clock, you'll start getting flyers. We are going to be partnering with the Richmond Rotary Club, they're here in the media center. They're hosting an overdose rescue training. The amount of Narcan, or the amount of overdose in their area has significantly increased. So there's a, I've given drawn a blank, I just had on the microphone, I forgot. An organization coming in from the Rotary, that the Rotary found, we're just hosting the meeting to give training, so if you have a situation where you need to work with somebody that has overdosed Narcan, they'll show you how to do that with science. It'll be June 11th at 7 o'clock in the Richmond Media Center. And then parents, you should see several awards are being put out by the buildings, from the preschool awards all the way up through convocation. The main difference this year is all of our grade level awards through the 11th grade are at the high school auditorium. So you just have to come here, rather than the gymnasiums or cafeterias, et cetera, for various awards. The Early College of Macomb graduation is May 9th at 4 o'clock at Jimmy John's Field. And then it's followed by the Macomb Community College graduation for those students. And them and their families receiving their associate's degree. Just reminder, convocations is Thursday, May 16th, 7 o'clock in the auditorium. Graduation is May 22nd. It's the Wednesday before Memorial Day, at 7 o'clock at the Macomb Center, Home of Earth. And for those of you attending the IAM graduation on May 23rd, it's also at the Macomb Center at 7 o'clock. Legislative, as Tammy mentioned, the budget for the Senate was released. Senate Bill 751 calls for a 3.1% increase in the per people founding, foundation, as well as significant increases in apparatus and English language learner. It does not fund preschool for all 4-year-olds, which is what's in the government budget. It's still leaving in the House, as we said, it should be out by the end of the month. The revenue estimated conference is May 17th, which is why I don't think we're going to have really a budget till after that, have really a budget till after that, because that's the date that they get the final, should be a better number of what the revenue they brought in from the state to finalize all the budgets. We're watching Senate Bill 285. It really doesn't affect us, but it affects private schools more. Senate Bill 285 now solidifies that kindergarten is mandated. Right now kindergarten is an option, you do not have to attend kindergarten, but Senate Bill 285 would require all students to attend and turn five by September 1st to enroll in kindergarten. Any district that offers first grade would be required to offer kindergarten. Again, most public schools, if not all of them, have some type of kindergarten right now. Parents do have the option in this bill to delay and wombat their child until age six so long as he's submitted notice to the district. Again, we're watching that. The other bill we're watching is House Bill 5527, 5528, which is a cardiac response plan we have in our crisis manual, how we respond if we have heart, students with heart troubles or staff, anybody. We have AEDs in the machines that are at the districts, two in every building. This would focus more on during or after school athletic events, which Preston talked about, that's one of the goals, to get a portal in. It really is focusing on non-public schools, that they have to have this in their plan. Most public schools already, if you adopted the county plan or the state framework, you have this already in your plan.
Do we have our teams still in our building for this?
We don't have the, I think we have a banner for American Red Cross. I think, John, we don't, we experienced that in the last year. We don't, but we have trained staff every year how to use AEDs and so forth. Senate Bills 741 to 743, testings started last Tuesday. This bill would require school districts to have a library in each of their building, and the library would be required to have at least one certified librarian based on design. So for instance, a building of 300 students would have to have at least a half-time librarian, or a building of 1,500 students would have to have two full-time librarians. The bills, basically, the librarians would then help, if it passed, if it actually going to affect the 24, 25 square. The intent is the librarians could help students reach reading benchmarks. Several state organizations including the MSB, Michigan School Association, my organization, they're all supportive of the concept of this, however, they're opposed to the bill because they are unfunded mandate. And as I said earlier, finding that many librarians in the state of Michigan, good luck. House Bill, or excuse me, special elections were held on the 13th and 25th of this past month. Where two Democrats won the seats, so the Democrats now have the means to maintain the majority in the House by a 56-54 majority. And finally, I'm going to brag about a Richmond alumni, Madeline Holmes, who graduated from Alma College this year with a Bachelor of Arts in Business. So my wife and I would like to thank the staff, the teachers, and the board. The education she received at Richmond prepared her very successful for college graduation. We're very proud of her, it could not have been more proud of her than the foundation she received here. So I thank the staff, the support staff, and the instructors. She's the first week that I have no kids in college. So it's an odd feeling. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our items of interest from the board. Sandy, we'll go with you first.
Um, I, uh, I don't think I have anything. I think I'm all set.
Okay. Angela?
I'm all set.
Danielle?
I'm good.
Kelly?
Yes, so for the May for Staff Appreciation, yes, you know what I'm talking about. Okay, so far, we have 18 responses, um, yeses, I'm sorry, 18 yes responses, only three no responses, and then 10 of those have requested to bring a significant other or spouse or plus one, so we're looking at 28 people currently as of today.
So you made a reminder, you know, I was just going to ask.
I still have until one week.
Um, I was looking at the things that you sent today, it was the 28th, so that's just another week.
Yeah.
Yes, I do. Now. You have to get a tight town on there. Yes, so I've sent out a reminder, emails, everybody. Is that it? Yep. Thank you. Candace?
Um, well, I guess I did forget about it. I forgot about it, Ms. Leroy, Mr. Rennie, through the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade game night a couple weeks ago, about a week or two, so I forgot. But it was their first event for the fourth through sixth game night, and I just love Ms. Leroy a lot. She absolutely puts so much enthusiasm into the events that she pulls off over in the school, so I do want to re-bond her a little bit for that. The kids had a great time, and she pulled it off. PTO helped just a little bit, not a bunch, so it goes to her. And the other thing, I just know that I sent out a email just regarding my interest in maybe talking about adding some sort of a budget line for field trips per each grade to go possibly, some sort of allocation to facilities for field trip, annual field trip per each grade. I know that we can consider it our next.
Maybe a couple weeks, are you looking at paying for the field trip, or are you looking at the cost cost?
Um, I think the cost cost, from what I've gathered, seems to be the biggest kind of undertaking for what they're saying when they're trying to get it together, seems to be the biggest undertaking for what they're being charged per mile, especially if they want to go somewhere, then they could consider this as an educational type field trip. I'm not exactly on the block from here, so.
Okay, with Tammy and Susie, we'll save them up, but they estimate that the average mile, and then this multiplied by teacher, whatever. Well, we'll talk, we'll figure it out. And very definitely.
Danielle, Steve, Dennis?
Hey, Margaret? Um, I just want to say, Sandy and I attended the National Junior Honor Society inductions as well, and it was a very well-attended morning event. And if we're, I'd like to see, you had talked to Brian, I don't know how long ago, that we've had a sub in each building, and that was through COVID, you know, stuff. I would just like to see if we have a little conversation budget-wise about what it would take to keep, keep something like that, and what's the advantage or disadvantage? The advantage I would think is that, you know, you've got somebody in the building as a sub, so if we can just have a conversation about that, please.
About your talks.
Yeah.
Margaret did.
That's it else?
Okay, I just want to, did you guys all get this in the mail?
Ooh, so I'm the only one. Congratulations.
I don't know how, practice kind of, okay. That just, this is.
That envelope came to some other people in the district, like into a, they had principal got it, non-principal got it, and teacher got it. I don't know where they got their mail, I don't know where they got their mailing this from.
Yeah, I don't know. Okay, this is all about negotiations, which I know that we're going to be, it's going to be coming up. And what it did is it gave a breakdown of all the new classroom observation, performance evaluation. It talks about what was, what is, and where is it going back to, and their suggestion on what we should look at. And I'm just thinking, I read through this already, and I really thought it was really good, and I thought all of you got it, because I thought it came through from my RMMSSB. So I'd be willing to share this out or pass it around, or this is going to be coming up. And to me, this will really, if you have never done a contract before, when Brian starts talking about things, this will really give you some background. So I just, if you want to borrow it from me, or I don't know if I can, I just found it very informative.
I'll take a picture, I'll look and see if I can find the link on the line. It's on the Macam Center, so it's probably a public document, so.
It was just very informative. I liked that it gave the history behind what was, what is, and then what's going to happen. I just found it very informative. So hopefully, if you want to borrow, you can, or maybe Brian will see if we can get some. Second, I just wanted to get back with everybody regarding, we talked about having a workshop. We have a lot going on right now, we've got a lot of night events going on, people are going all over the place almost every night during the week. So I am going to push it till June, and the only topic that was given to me was what we talked about as far as going over the policies for the board, and then Candace suggested maybe looking at our procedures of when we do discipline hearings. Otherwise, I did not receive any other topics from anybody. So take a look at your June calendar, that should be after, the graduation will be done, all of the events and things that are happening, so it'll be a little bit easier. Because I, people gave me dates and they were all over the place, guys. I tried to sit down and look at something that would, I'm looking at Sandy's and what, you know, and I just, it just wasn't working at all, because there's too many things going on. And that's just me. So if that's okay with you, I'm going to look at a date in June, and again, the topic will be the policy for our board. And if anybody else is interested, we'll just look at our format of how we do our discipline hearings in closed session.
For board policy, so it's what we have left that we didn't finish. That's what, that's what it's going to be. We have all that stuff, and then what, what's the point of discipline hearing? I don't understand.
Well, just the procedures, who's supposed to be invited, who's supposed to be there? If we need, if we felt, are we comfortable with it? Are we comfortable doing it? We did change it to have it at 6:00, so that gives us an hour. Is that something we want to continue to do? We need to reevaluate that, that was something we tried this year. So that'd be.
I'm just like, I'm not interested in that for a workshop. I don't know that that's workshop material. And if we want to talk about how we're going to do the discipline hearing, when we're going to do it, then that would be at the organizational meeting, if we decided how we're going to do it for this year. If there's questions about how we run our discipline hearings, I'm not sure why it's a workshop. If someone has a question, they can sit down with Brian and get that information, or make it an agenda item that we can talk about it in the agenda if people are interested. That's where I'm coming from. I don't want to waste my time.
However, were at a workshop changes, was that done in our last workshop?
No, that was done like mid-year. No, we talked about it at the organizational meeting.
Of changing it.
About how, about.
To me, I do it in the beforehand. So do we want to then wait until our next organizational meeting to reevaluate our time starting at 6? Is that what you're telling me?
I think you need to do it here as part of it to see how.
How it works.
I guess.
Okay. I have no problem with that. So if there's no other interest, I will just, I will just cover board policies.
So in the event that I meet with Brian and we go over, and I feel like maybe we could change some of the ways that we're doing it, or add new pieces to our discipline hearing, or have input on it, how would I, how would one go about changing that? Is that something that the board then has to vote on, the changes, or?
I guess it would depend what it is that we want to change, you know, we can legally do things of certain way, you want to just land it, right?
Oh, absolutely.
When you're inside, okay. So I, since I don't know what your questions would be, I guess you could, you could talk to Brian about your questions, and if there's stuff that you think you want to change, then put it, make it an agenda.
Then that comes back out to the board and we all talk about it.
Just let me know, we'll put it on the agenda. After you meet with Brian, if that's something we feel, you feel, we'll put it on.
And does, and is everybody interested in that? But I think what Candace runs into is like, so she has this great conversation with Brian, then how does she bring it up to the board? If we're all like, well, are you interested in talking about it? Well, I don't know what you guys talked about in there, I don't know, there might be something interesting in there. So it's like, I think that's why she keeps bringing up the idea of a workshop, because like the brainstorming idea, and we're all sharing ideas and stuff like that, that doesn't happen. She's the only one that wants it on the agenda, it doesn't get on the agenda. Or is that, that's how it's been done so far. If only one person wants it on the agenda, it doesn't seem to get on it. It has to be, the majority of the board wants it on the agenda.
Are you talking agenda on a board meeting, or are you talking agenda for a workshop?
No, board meeting, according to Rashawn. So someone has asked for something to be on the agenda, and it's not.
I denied one. I've denied one.
You denied one.
Yeah. And all the time that I've done it, I've denied one. So what is the procedure for that?
So, well, I guess grammar conversation. So does anyone else sitting on the board have concerns, questions, changes, things they want to do with how we conduct the discipline?
Do you even want to have a discussion?
That's, that's really, to me, that's what comes, make it an agenda, as opposed to a workshop, a workshop in June. Well, I would like for you guys to talk, maybe give us a call, give me a call, let me know what you came up with, and if I'm interested, then we then reach out to you that, like some buzzboard covers if we want it. Yeah, wait, I just asked the question, is there anything? Well, I would be interested in discussing, so there's two. Candace maybe has to say.
There's two people would like that to be an agenda. I would be interested in looking into it.
Is there anybody out there? To me, that's how, if there's, if there's people that are interested in that, that's a topic that should go on an agenda.
So it doesn't have to be the majority of the board, can it be one or two? I mean, one has been.
One person can ask something to be put on the agenda.
It doesn't have to be put on the agenda?
Doesn't have to be.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, I guess since, I don't know the reason why whoever requested, why it wasn't put on the agenda, so I can't answer that. To me, when, when I was board president, if people, if someone wanted something on the agenda, it went on, timed allotted on the agenda. If it was conversation that maybe could happen between the superintendent and the board, and it didn't really, it didn't have to comport, that's what it is.
You made a decision.
But if this, but if this is something that not just Candace, we all attend discipline, and if other people feel like she does, then make it an agenda. I don't have a problem with how we do our discipline. So if the majority of the people want to make an agenda, then that's what it is.
We don't have a majority.
I don't have a problem either, but I would like to maybe hear if there's some ideas, some way we can make it better or more, whatever, if there's some good ideas between, like when the two of you get together, who knows what they could brainstorm or get some good ideas together and then share with the rest of us, or what maybe they do. I don't disagree with that, but I think we also have to remember that they don't always go how inside of us we think they should go. You know what I'm saying? Each situation is different, and we do what we do with the information that is given to us, and sometimes we don't like the outcome. I'm not like the outcome. I voted no on some things over time. As long as we understand that, that you're, you're going to, I'm just saying.
So my suggestion is, Candace, you're making this forms, if there's something that comes out of that, that you feel as the board, we need it, we let you know, and I'll put it on the agenda. Okay. Okay. Any other, did we get everybody? Yes, I was the last one. Okay, public comments. Since the last board meeting, both the board and the superintendent received an email from a parent regarding the change for the charging of these at the girls' soccer match. I know that Mr. Walmsley and Mr. Trent have responded back to the spirit. The board and Mr. Walmsley have also received an email from a parent concerning services received by their daughter. I know that Mr. Walmsley, I know our special ed director, the high school principal, and the teacher are involved in addressing this situation and will be meeting this week. We had no public comments at the last board meeting, so there's nothing to address. At this time, any member of the public may address the board, please sign in and state your name. You'll have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments?
I just have a question, we don't have to know how the robot people made out.
Could you please step up to the podium?
But you're not going to answer me up here.
I, I, I don't have an answer. Well, I have somewhat of an answer. We're not supposed to answer it this time, but I will on this one.
Sure. It's not difficult. Of course, you're going to have to. Of course, you're going to have to.
Well, I know they didn't put into the panel that.
They won four out of their 10 qualified matches.
Yeah.
All right. So what?
They won four out of their 10 qualified matches. And there's, it's actually kind of a complicated thing because there's five different fields and there's 75 teams on each field. So, I mean, they were real close. They were, I think, placed 42.
Forty, yeah.
Forty-two out of the 75 on their field.
Yeah.
So they were real close to making it because I think it's usually the first 32 and stuff going into running the semis.
And they had a chance because they could, the first 32 automatically go in and then they do pick.
Yes.
And they didn't, they're chosen to go on, so.
Well, it's exciting to know about them going and I was hoping somebody would mention that they raised and nothing happened, so.
Yes, we haven't heard back from them. They just got back in.
Well, they did.
Yeah, they just got back, what, Sunday?
Yes.
Sunday. So we haven't really heard from anybody.
Sunday was the last day of.
Yeah, this last, yesterday. So we're hoping to have something for you. Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, we have one action item. At this time, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the changes to board policy 3304.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the changes to board policy 3304, use of district property in the facility use, facility rates and procedures as outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuit to section 88 of the Michigan Open Meetings Act and upon the request of the superintendent, I move that the Board of Education will enter closed session to consider the periodic personnel evaluation of the superintendent.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just so the public knows, we will not be doing any other business.